Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It is October 3rd of 2019, and thank you everyone for attending tonight. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay. Approval of the agenda. First order of business.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment, none. So we'll move down to new business, and I guess the subdivision on Rob Sean Place is still coming together, or not. Okay. So we do have before us the Cunzler Boundary Line Adjustment. And it... Got some materials here that just came in dated yesterday. The cover letter reads, "The applicant is proposing a boundary line adjustment to the property at 336 Tamarack Lane." Encloses site plan for the proposed boundary line adjustment. Lot A is an existing 12.2 plus or minus acre improved lot, and is proposed to be reduced to 4.6 plus or minus acres. Lot B is an existing 158 plus or minus acre improved lot, and is proposed to be increased to 165 plus or minus acres. In addition, an easement is being provided for Lot A's access to the designated replacement wastewater system, now to be located on Lot B. Now, we did say that we wanted to see the state's approval of the wastewater permit, and I don't see that here. I'll just throw that out there, maybe we can make this contingent on that. Or we...
I didn't talk to the person that dropped it off, so I don't know where they're at.
Right. That was my understanding with our conversation with them, right? Mr. Cohen discussed having Planning Commission approval contingent on them getting state approval for the... It says for the boundary line adjustment, but I think that means that that is the wastewater permit.
No, I think...
Then the state would not give permission for... The state has nothing to do with the boundary line adjustment. So that is something...
Oh yeah, that's correct, yes. But I thought it was for the subdivision under the state regulations, it would be a subdivision. In our regulations, it's a boundary line.
Either way, we don't...
They need the wastewater.
Right, we don't... I don't see the permit here. Let's check one more time.
But that wasn't passed anyway, my suggestion. As I recall.
So, um...
I don't think we voted on it.
We've got this checkoff sheet. So, the application was received the 1st of October, got a number assigned to it. Is the application complete?
Read note number five down there. This is not intended to be a bounty survey. There's no bearings or distances around this 4.6 acres or whatever it is, which caught my eye, but number five, take a moment to read that.
Must be on the application, which I don't have.
Is that on the application, Howard?
Oh, you're talking about number five?
On the drawing.
Oh, on the drawing.
Oh, over here, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Oh.
Wonder why that language is in there?
You know, to me, it's not complete in that there's no bearings or distances or anything showing around this 4.6 acres. Normally you would... We would see that. I mean, it looks like they're using this as a temporary plan to...
Almost like a sketch plan.
Yeah. Too bad they weren't here, if we could talk to them.
Right.
I noticed too, the acreage, it's not, I guess, maybe a big deal, but the acreage is off. So, it's 7.6, but then when they add acreage, they only add 7. So I mean, it just seems like there's a little bit of some specifics that they need to maybe take care of.
What was 7.6?
They're taking away 7.6, but when... But where it says Lot B, they're only adding 7, and I guess it just would be better to be specific and say they're adding 7.6.
My impression was they were going to survey this lot, and they didn't... And maybe they didn't know either, this is what they were going to get, but my understanding was it would be a survey, like how, you know, with distances.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
And directions.
Because they're showing a proposed boundary line. But again, there's no bearings or distances, that's just this line that's going across right here.
The red line?
The red line, yeah.
Proposed property line.
Yeah. Also, it looks like this is a temporary... The language somewhat speaks for itself in item five, doesn't it?
That is not...
The fact that it says shall not be used in lieu of a survey and any land transfer? That to me kind of seals the deal.
Plus, we have the issue with the stormwater permit, or the wastewater permit, not being in here.
I don't know what their plans were, if they were going to come back with something showing this, the bearings and distances. Doesn't look complete, to me.
Norm?
I don't know whether we need a motion or not to ask Bill to get more specific... Talk with them about a more specific description.
I don't think so. If it's not there, it's...
I'm sorry?
I don't think you do. I mean, you can do it, but you can just say, go back and talk to them, so...
I'm sorry.
I don't think you need a motion to... I mean, you can make one if you want to, but I don't think it's necessary. We can just go back and...
Talk with them.
On the checklist, start breaking down verification page or the... Write on there exactly what the problems are, and I'll go back to them with that, so...
Because technically, this is not a land survey, based on the note.
I suspect that our subdivision regulations don't define what we want to survey, but anyway.
They were working with the state and other... They were trying to identify the septic location, and Freddie Ann was in one day, and she told me that they were having difficulty. A1 sewer and drain had gone up, and one of the lines seemed to be plugged, so they didn't really know where the septic was and what they should or shouldn't be doing. And I suggested that she go to the Ace of Bloomer Building and talk with the folks there, Dave Swift or somebody, and discuss what's going on, and I assumed that she went there, but I know there were some issues with the septic, as to... Because they have a... They have a system, which was a backup system that was provided up above, and they would have to put a line in and pump to it. And she didn't know, you know, which way they were going or whatever. It's unfortunate that she or he is not here.
And that may be one thing we might want to ask for the next time, too.
This is the overall boundary line adjustment plan. What they're calling it, the big bold letters, I guess it's... It's almost like it's a site sketch that...
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, application complete, no. And under the comments, technically not a survey, it says it's a plan, looks like a site sketch. Do we want to indicate that we'd like to see the water permit, the wastewater permit?
State wastewater permit.
Yes.
And do we want to see a representative from...
Just if they made... If they got everything on the checklist, I guess they wouldn't have to be here, would they? Although it certainly would make it easier.
Yeah, if we have questions.
I hate to have another meeting, and I still have things missing.
Right, right.
Apparently, this is not the surveyor's map, this is an Enman engineering map. He did the survey up there initially of the whole property and laid everything out, but it looks like it's one of Enman's maps, I believe.
If they don't... Enman is not a surveyor.
No, but he was the one who did all the site planning up there for the septic, you know, all of that. He did it initially.
I think the design is PMG, isn't that that Patrick Griffin? PMG, Patrick M. Griffin? So whoever the seal is here is who was involved with drawing it.
And who's he with?
I don't know. I'm not sure if he's...
So, we can suggest the next meeting on the 24th, which might be kind of a busy meeting with the Stormwater Ordinance's agenda that night. We can suggest that meeting, or... They said the closing was November 15th. We do have a meeting on November 14th.
That's not fair.
The closing on this?
Didn't they mention it that last time, that they did have a closing date and it was November 15th?
I don't remember.
Did I just make that up?
You can give them the option.
Yeah.
Those two dates.
Anything else we should...
Well, it looks like they're showing what the proposed disposal system, the easement to get to that septic is going to be... It's all shown in red or orange, and apparently, they're going to need to pump up to that... I don't know. Whatever.
I'll put the septic issues question mark there, too?
Pass the pole field?
Anything else in the comments?
Okay.
Yeah, so it says approved MYLARs for all properties involved with the requested boundary line adjustment must already be on file with the town of Rutland, to use this form.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sorry. So, prerequisite for the boundary line adjustment, approved MYLARs for all properties involved with the requested boundary line adjustment must already be on file with the town of Rutland. If not, the subdivision process must be followed. So the MYLARs, the official survey...
Those are on file, I believe, all of that's on file.
But with the boundary line adjustment?
No. In fact, up in here again, up in the corner, it says issued for permit review. This is just for permit review.
Took a sketch plan.
Septic, yeah. And again, if you look over by the scale they've got, plans are intended for review of property line adjustment only, so it's just a preliminary plan. Nothing we can take action on.
It also says final plat will be signed after approval by chairperson if it meets all detailed requirements. So we need to sign the survey plat.
That's typically done.
I mean, that's after approval.
It needs to be filed with the town before we can give approval? Is that what you read, the first one?
The first one...
The intention was subdivisions are going to come with new surveys, but if we... If they want to make this process a short process, we already had to have complete surveys of all the properties on file beforehand. Doesn't mean they can't do it, file them, and now they're here. This means this doesn't cut it.
Right.
In order for it to qualify for a boundary line adjustment, we have to have a survey on file, as I recall them. But that survey and what we're asking for now are two different things. Correct. The survey on file just qualifies them for the shortened process of a boundary line adjustment as opposed to a subdivision permit.
Okay, so as long as... So it doesn't need to show, the one that's on file, the prerequisite, doesn't need to show the new boundary?
Correct.
It just needs to have both original properties?
That's just the threshold to get the abbreviated treatment. It doesn't excuse them from giving meets and bounds for the new property. Correct, Howard? Is that your understanding as well? The... I'm sure you've read the subdivision regulations and know them by heart now, of course, but the definition of boundary line adjustment is very...
Minimalistic.
Very limited. It wouldn't be fair to ask us the same question.
So we don't need to say that they need to have the MYLAR filed with the town before we take this up again?
We think it's there. Is that right, Howard? Yeah, I believe that they're... A number of years ago, they did the subdivision of the 12 acres, and that that's on file here in the vault. Double check. In fact, in talking to Freddie Ann, she said, yes, it's there. So I believe it's there, and we can double check that.
Yeah.
So that sets it up so that it could be... It could qualify for a boundary line adjustment because the original survey plats are on file.
As long as they meet all those other things that we're asking for, of course, right?
Okay. Anything else on this one? I think we've got some instructions for them. All set, Norm? Anything else? Okay. Okay. On to the October 24th public meeting on the Stormwater Ordinance. Andres Torres will be down here again. The letters, the 444-ish...
They got some attention.
Oh. And the reason we limited it, stopped at the 444, was that there are like 50 addresses at Heritage Hills, right? So they would be going to the same property owner. So, we think we got everyone, or just about everyone, and everyone's been calling Bill.
And several board members, too.
Several board members?
Yep.
Oh, who got letters?
Nope.
Select board members.
They've been calling... People have been calling select board members as well.
Oh, okay.
This letter got some attention, yes.
Got their attention. That's what we wanted.
So, I'm not sure if we're going to want a plan to use downstairs. If we do, we're going to need a little bit of preparation work because all of the new furniture for the clerk's office is downstairs in the middle of the floor.
Okay.
I thought we were going to use the...
Well, we didn't... I mean, the school? That, yeah. That didn't happen. We didn't think we'd get a crowd. We thought we could fit them in here. Do we have... Is there even a way for Andres to do a PowerPoint downstairs? Even if the furniture...
If we need to, we can do it, no problem.
But there's a lot of furniture.
It's not a lot of furniture, but it's all their desks and counters, it just needs to get... We can move it to the stage, but we just need a few people to coordinate that, and I can't do it, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Not even by the 24th? Oh, sorry, Bill.
So, it's not a lot heavy, it's just there's just stuff to move around, so, and we got chairs and whatnot, but I think we should plan for that.
Yeah, instead of this room.
So, is there a max... I mean, is there a number of people that we're going to plan for?
I don't think we can plan.
Well, that's it, yeah?
That's the nature of public meetings, you get what you get. Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
And, the circle hasn't come out yet, right? There's going to be... There's going to be some publicity in there, too. It's a box, it's a pretty bold box. Like, if you receive one of those letters, you probably want to attend this meeting. So...
Did you get one, Andy? Did you get one?
Yes.
Me, too. I'll be there.
How many people have you heard from, do you think?
Probably close to 30.
Wow. Most of them indicating that they think they...
Mixed, but a lot of them wanted to know... Because I guess we put in there that there was a first letter, and a lot of the questions of what was the first letter, the first letter was the people that were the 40-some odd people, but we didn't say that. So, created a little confusion, but that's okay. But a lot of them just asking questions about why they're getting the letter and whatnot, so, yeah. I don't know. Don't know what we're going to see.
How many people can fit down there? How many chairs are there?
Oh, we got a lot of chairs.
It's double the size of this room.
Oh, easily.
Easily, so I mean, 100 people could fit in there, I think.
Okay, should do it, I would think. So do we have some volunteers to come that afternoon and get the room ready?
Yeah. Is it the 24th?
I can't move furniture.
Who's going to move it? Will?
I don't know, but I can't do it, so... I can supervise, but I can't participate, not yet.
Well, we need to know... I mean, I'm happy to help.
It's not hard. We can go down... After tonight, we can go down and I'll show you what it is. It's not hard, we just got to move it.
You just have to know where to put it.
Yeah, I got a place to put it. That's fine.
What time would be best for you, Bill?
We should probably need an hour or so, at the most, and it's not terrible. After this, we'll go down and we'll show you what it is.
Okay.
Because we'll need two things, people remove the furniture and then set up all the chairs.
Yes. That I can do. I'll tell you later. But we have a weight restriction for a little bit, so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll figure out the time. Again, this is October 24th, sometime in the afternoon, if volunteers can help get the room together. And then the actual meeting starts at 6:30. And should we put a... Well, we really can't put a time limit on it. I mean, I'm thinking of like if the Cunzlers come back, what time should we...
Oh, we just have to let them know that there's a public meeting that may...
There'll be first, there'll be the second, there'll be first, second item.
Why don't we just take the Cunzlers first?
Because you warned them with the public that it's a 6:30.
Yeah. Obviously, you got to go with the public meeting, that's what's been warned and...
It's not really warned, it's not officially warned.
But it's on everybody's letter, they're going to...
Yeah.
It'll be pretty hard if they come in and we start telling them, well, we're going to push it off a little bit, that may not sit too well.
Yeah.
Soon as it comes, we're going to push you off a little bit until we get this other meeting out of the way, you know, that's...
I mean, I think we can at least say it'll be like 7:30.
Is anybody from the Select Board going to be present?
I don't know.
It might be helpful, since they were the body that adopted it, and to not have answers to questions that we can't... Not have somebody there to answer questions that we might not be able to answer, since they enacted it, it might be helpful to have a representative there.
Yeah. What kind of questions or comments are they getting, Bill, do you know, the Select Board?
Just a lot of questions about why did I get the letter? Not really understanding what it meant, and looking at the map and being like, well, I don't border the stream, it's like, no, but. So it's just clarification and...
Sounds like a fun evening. Okay. So we'll go down after the meeting and check it out. Anything else on this topic? Moving down to the Enhanced Energy Plan, the Select Board had its second public hearing. Public hearings before, and this is, they've had two more. And no one attended the hearing. Norm and I were in the audience, and there was some discussion among Select Board members, and then they decided to table any further discussion, any action, until their next meeting, which is the 15th of October. There was some discussion about this was taking landowners' rights away, and I'm not quite sure what that was referring to. I'm not sure if it... Criterion 10 is in there now, that's Norm's criterion?
As ably modified by Mary.
Right. I think they were referring to that, that if you get close to the target, then are you precluding some landowners from developing their land or making a deal with a developer? I think that's what it was about. I mentioned that we, once Otter Creek 1 and 2 go online, we are going to be close to the target that the town was given by the Regional Planning Commission, and that's even without the hydro figured in. So, that played some role in them wanting to table this, too, but I'm not quite sure how. It could go back to Criterion 10 again, and it may be that they want to take that criterion out now and not be so concerned about the target and let... Give landowners more leeway. Norm, do you have any other... Do you have another summary or anything else to add?
Well, I think you've stated it correctly, they're just... I think both of us were surprised, at least I know I was. And Mr. Donardo was the one who was articulating the property rights concerns. And it was John Paul Fagin's motion to delay it. And it seemed like it was in response to the comment, but you couldn't be sure, comments that Barbara made regarding where we would be with Otter Creek 1 and 2. With Otter Creek 1 and 2, well, let me just... When I first mentioned this, as Barbara and I discussed it going along, I asked her where we were, and she... We were... Came back, we were 84%, but 75% of 84, rough, more or less, was hydro. Roughly. Now, with Otter Creek 1 and 2, it's so huge, I thought you said we would be well over our target. If you add Otter Creek 1 and 2, the existing, and the hydro, then we're well over the target. I don't know how... What Jay Paul's... I don't know how, uh, what Jay Paul's, uh, reasoning was.
Yeah, he didn't explain it at all.
Yeah, he did, yeah, he didn't. He just wanted to think about it more. Um, the, uh, there was some concern about its complexity, and, um, I think, uh, I spoke to that briefly, and I may speak to it briefly again if I go on the 15th. You're not gonna be there the 15th, is that right?
I, I'm, I will be there.
You will be there.
I've been instructed to be there.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I've been told to, to make it, even, yes, I'll be there.
Well, now, we'll just see. It's a little bit disheartening, given how hard that we all worked on this, and, you know, how we really put all our ideas and thoughts together. I spoke a bit about that in the context, I thought, Jay Paul would understand, I said it's like a lawsuit, and that just keeps going, and we've all had that, but he rolled his eyes, and Mary rolled her eyes, and, um-
But I think you paraphrasing Jerry's comments-
Oh, yeah.
About, um, you know, probably none of us liked the whole thing, or everything in the plan, but there's enough parts of it that we think are good, or, or are needed at this point, something, I'm really not, probably paraphrasing that well, but-
Jerry had made a comment that stuck with me, and I think summed up the work, is that everybody had a piece of it, there were things we all might like to tweak a little, but overall, it was the best product we could produce, and we worked on it for, what, two years? And so I tried to impress upon them we weren't eager to do it again. And I don't know whether, this is just appropriate pause to really think about it more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that would be on the 15th. Now, um, there's, um, another matter that's kinda rolled into this, too, and, and maybe affecting the select board's thinking on this. Jim, you've written a second letter to them, essentially asking them not to pass this, right? Can you tell me why you, you feel the need to keep writing the letters and, and, and keep, uh, trying to defeat what, what this group did come up with, after-
Because I don't agree with it. Supposedly.
I gather that. I gather you don't agree with it, but I think that was clear in the first letter. Um, what did you think you would accomplish by writing a second letter to them? I mean, especially given some of the discussions we've had here about, about, you know, taking our decisions and everybody accepting them as they are.
I didn't bring, doesn't bring also with me, but, uh, I just feel, I feel there's some things that they don't know about that, that, uh, that are in that plan that I went over with, uh, you and, and Josh.
Right. And I, I've, I personally feel like there's some things in the plan that you don't know need to be in there for the town to have a seat at the table when these decisions go before the state. I mean, it's, it's not just prescribed regulations for the sake of that, it's, it's so that there's a structure and, and a plan in place that clearly defines, you know, where the town stands on alternative energy, and, and where it'd like to see it, and where it would not like to see it. And it's, um, it's, it's just something substantive that, that they can say, oh, yes, you, you met all those, and that's what we're looking for. And it's, it's just not in there just so, you know, we're pleasing certain contingents, um, out there. I, I just, I'm, I'm just kinda frustrated, Jim, um, that we, we can't resolve this as, as a group here.
I live with it.
As long as you have that document the way it's presented, you'll never get my support.
And if we, if we redid it the way I think you wanna see it, it would never, it would never pass muster before the PUC-
That, that doesn't matter. That's, uh, to me, what Rotland Town needs, as far as I can, uh, as far as I'm concerned, is a plan that fits Rotland Town, that is representative of Rotland Town, um, that would pass muster if it should go before the voters for voter input. I don't think this one would if we put it before the voters.
I think there's, there's a number of instances like that, maybe some town plans wouldn't get approved by voters, there, there's some towns that, that have to do that, and, and it becomes pretty acrimonious and, and, and difficult.
We haven't, we haven't come to the, uh, the level in, uh, in our town plans being constructed over the years that, uh, this energy plan is, I mean, is-
Right.
No comparison.
Right, it's, it is very different than, than a town plan, but it's, it, it, the state wants it part of the town plan, um, so that it's in that structure and carries the weight of a town plan. It's not just some separate energy plan that, you know, we, we think would be nice, it is part of the official town plan, and that is what, that is what helps get it the substantial deference before the PUC, when these projects. And I don't think, I mean, I don't think most people in town would wanna see, um, another Otter Creek 1 and 2 in town without us being at the table, and saying, we, we did, you know, our plan lays out everything, we clearly stay, state what we want and what we don't want, but we won't have that without that enhanced energy plan. Norm, did you-
I've, the, it goes back to the, what's the name of the one at Creek Road and, uh, not Creek Road, at, uh-
The Cold River.
Stratt Road and, Co- and Cold River?
Cold River.
What's that?
Uh, that's, it's just called Cold River Project, yeah, right.
What's the name of the development?
Cold River.
Okay. The, um, that case went to the Vermont Supreme Court, and we lost, and it was a very difficult decision for the court, it's the first time I can remember, and I don't read every opinion, but where there was a majority opinion, a dissenting opinion, in which the chief justice was one of the dissenters, and a concurring opinion, so, you just don't see that a lot.
Hmm.
You know, the court pretty much works as a body. Um, and the problem was, our citing regulations were not followed. Um, and I don't remember whether it was before or after, but then this process was started, uh, and the state designed this format so that towns could be heard and were assured to be heard, but there were threshold requirements that they had to have. So, in that, and, and I found that particular development offensive, I ride my bike out there a lot, or I used to when I was on that side of town, and it was beautiful, and it should, and we should, you know, it, it just stands out now. Um, so what we tried to do, and if, if I'm speaking out of term, please correct, but essentially, we tried to balance some very serious competing interests together, um, to prevent what sometimes when I'm underweight, I call carpet bombing our landscape with solar panels. And we tried to take into consideration, at least I know I did, and I think everybody to one extent or another, the rights of the landowners, and particularly the farmers who provide the landscape to us, that was in the foresters, um, the needs of the community, the state's targets for energy, um, the, uh, and how we're gonna deal with it in the future as a community, and we tried to lay basis for that, and, um, uh, recommended, which hasn't been accepted, but I think we're gonna try again, uh, an energy committee to, uh, implement this energy plan once passed. And, um, do we get something wrong here or there? Undoubtedly. Uh, I, I have seen your email, your letter, um, but I think it was a really sincere effort by, by everybody here to do their best work and safeguard the town and provide for energy, and, um, that's what we did. Um, I'm not offended by your letter, right? And as usual, it's well-written, and I've told you that, although we probably disagree on substance, you do a beautiful job of laying out your thoughts. Um, you spoke here once about, and spoken in your letter, concerning affordability, and I know that with me, and I remember Barbara, and I don't remember anybody else's reaction to it, it struck a chord, and my reaction was that's something for the energy committee to do, we couldn't possibly cover in the town, in the energy plan, all the ramifications and parameters, and different financing agencies, and different programs that were necessary, I know that was one of your issues in the, in the letter, and I thought we had talked about that and addressed it. My bigger concern is not copying everybody so that we could address the issues before the select board that you raised, and I, I would hope in the future, you're welcome to disagree, just let us know so that we could, you know, in advance, so that we could address it, either with you or with, could resolve it with you, with the board. That, that's my concern.
I'd like to say that, I think we should, we should end this right now. Jim has a right to his own opinion, you've stated yours, Norm, I really don't think we've gotta take this any further.
Okay, I'd just like to give Jim a chance to respond, or if you have any other comments.
I've said everything I need to.
Okay. And I'll just say one, one other thing, uh, the town does not have an energy plan right now, it, it was struck down by the Supreme Court, the energy section in, in the town plan, so there's, there's nothing that has any kind of teeth at all. Um, and all this, all this effort was to not only get something in the plan that would be legitimate, but also would take, go up to that next step and get the substantial deference, and cross all the Ts and dot all the Is that are needed for that.
And the Supreme Court struck down what? A portion of just ours?
Yeah. The, the energy plan was recrafted around the, the Cold River project to try to limit that, and it, it was, it was found to be, it was, it was struck down, uh, it was found to be too much like zoning in a town that doesn't have zoning.
Yeah.
Um, it was trying to restrict solar, very specifically.
I'm not sure if Barbara, it's fair to say it struck down the entire-
Yeah.
Energy plan, accurate, I don't think it would be unfair, um, but it, uh, our citing standards were, uh, not followed, disregarded, um, and one of the opinions, if not the majority opinion, I forgot, talked about it appearing to be spot zoning.
Yeah.
It's been years since I've read it, so.
That was in the initial with Otter Creek.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So if another project came up in-
Or, excuse me, uh-
In, in an area where we didn't want it, um, that would be the precedent, that we don't, you know, we don't have a valid plan. And that's another thing this was, this enhanced energy plan is trying to address, to get something there that-
So, so that's with the select board now, and are we gonna, are we gonna have a discussion with the select board, or, or is it just done with no question?
The only, the only place that would, that would, um, you know, occur would be at the, the next meeting, if they take it up.
We'll be on their agenda, but-
Yeah, right.
When, when it's discussed-
Are you asking for a special meeting with the select board?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to understand the process first. So when it's discussed at the select board, um, do they welcome comments from the planning commission, or just from the public, is, is really what I was asking?
Well, I, I think both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It, you know, depends on the, how much is on the agenda that night, and how much they wanna hear, but-
Okay, right.
They, they don't wanna hear our presentation anymore.
No, I understand.
But if-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If there's specific questions that they have, I mean, I haven't heard someone say specifically, here's what's wrong, so if there's specific things that are being discussed there that people don't understand, we could, we could just clarify anything that's not understood, that, that's what I wanted to be sure of, because most of the complaints are just against it in general, and I understand that.
I just was wondering, wouldn't, wouldn't you have to, or, or someone, either you or Dana, or whoever was present at that meeting, representing that, doesn't that, if, if we were to show up, and, and Norm would, and, you know, if, if you show up and you bring that up, does that not start to get into, or whether Jim does, that it starts to go for the very things that we were talking about trying to eliminate, wasn't it? I mean, if, we never really, we never really went down the road to Norm's 10th thing, did we?
No, no.
I mean, so then, then you would have to represent the planning commission, or someone that, you're a representative, you've, I mean, we couldn't all be there and start discussing it, because it comes in, it starts coming into what we personally think. I mean, if I personally was there, I would say that I didn't like it, but I worked hard to find a way to fit the best we could. I mean, I still, you know, you, you've heard all my cliches, that it's an end around, I think the state took all these towns and said, well, if you're gonna do this, you've gotta do X, Y, Z to make it more cumbersome for every town to get it accomplished. That's what I personally feel, but, but I worked through that, and I got to a point where I felt like we, we put together a pretty good document, but if we were all go to the select board and sit there and say something, would we not be immediately considered as part of the planning commission, rather than, if I went there and said that, I, I'd be, then they would be saying the same thing that happened with Norm's. I just, I just wonder about when we go to select board meetings for a planning commission matter, um, we, I don't think we can really be a part of the public. I, I don't-
Well, I, I think Norm played that role pretty well, when he went and-
But it did stir up a lot of stuff. I mean, they were, you know, so, I mean, wouldn't we, we, wouldn't we be doing our, all of ourselves a little bit better favor than when we collectively came up with a document? To leave that up to one representative to represent us-
Yes.
-in most cases? And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just, I, I just feel like that, then all the, you know, then the crap hits the fan, because Norm brings up something that, and immediately, the first thing they thought, and the first thing, to be quite honest with you, I thought, is, well, Norm's heard everything, now he's changing something we did, or asking in addition to something we did, and it doesn't surprise me that it stirred the pot. So, I, I just, I'm, I'm kinda more in favor of-
I'm confused by, I'm confused by attending the meeting Tuesday night, are you saying that I-
No, not at all, I'm saying the one, the one where you, where you discussed for your personal ma-, you know, as a personal matter, you discussed adding another criterion, regulation, or whatever, I just felt like, pretty damn obvious, I think, what happened if I was on the select board, it's the first thing I would've thought, is, wait a minute, you spent all that time, you couldn't come up, and Jim couldn't, we couldn't all collectively, Jim wasn't here, actually, but, we couldn't all, we collectively came up with something, so what's the first thing they're gonna wonder? I, that's what I said, when I saw it, and I, so, my point is, is that, that when it comes to planning commission ma- So my point is, is that when it comes to planning commission matters, I think it's better that there's one representative for planning commission matters. And if you want to go talk about a dog ordinance, or I do, or whatever, that's a little different that, you know, has nothing to do with us. I mean, I don't know. That's just...
Yeah, yeah. And I wasn't implying...
I know you weren't.
That we would all go, but I was just implying we would have someone there to basically, I hate to use the word, to defend what we've done.
Right, I agree, I agree. And there should be, but I think that when other persons start talking and in adding, that are planning commissioners and adding beyond you, I think it gets weird. And it's no wonder that they kind of put on the brakes.
Okay. Andy, I'm sorry, I just kind of sensed there's a little bit more to be said.
No, no, no. No, what I was speaking of before, you, we turned a corner there, in my opinion. So that's not, no, not a problem.
Jerry, just for your information, neither of us offered any comment, we were just there.
Norm, I really don't want to get into a discussion to, I'm not, I'm not saying that you've done anything wrong or something that I may not have done. All I'm simply stating is that there should be one representative representing the planning commission when it deals with, when it deals with the select board so that there is no confusion. That's all I'm saying, and I'm not saying you've done anything wrong or that's...
I'm not understanding you to say that.
And I don't, I don't want to relive that whole thing. That's just my opinion, you know?
I think you're correct.
Well, I will be there on the 15th. We'll see how it goes. Anything else on this? Under additional business or announcements, or it's not really announcements or news, but this, the general budget, what's the timeline? I mean, we're already working on the budget?
All the departments have gotten blank budget sheets for planning, so it's just, just starting having conversations, so...
Okay. Ours is so simple, but...
Yours is very simple, yes. You're lucky.
But there's no deadline yet for getting numbers together?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Just in awareness.
Okay. Approval of September 12 minutes.
I have some corrections.
Okay.
In paragraph four, where it says the mapping exercise was paused, I think suspended is better. And then in paragraph five, where it says the exercise resumed, I think it would read better if it said it resumed, and that'd be all part of the same paragraph four. And in, under the new business, paragraph three, said parcel being rolled into and I think becoming a part of the farm parcel. And then, next page, it says Mr. Cohen...
I forgot about that because that wasn't what they actually said.
I'm sorry?
I think I used that term because that's what they actually said.
Okay.
We can change it, but that's what...
Okay, if that's what it was.
I don't normally use that, but that's what they, I think that's what they actually said, so that's why I used that.
I got a couple of little things I'll just give you. One, I'll just give you a copy of my notes.
Sure.
How about number five there?
Oh, yeah, I didn't think you could make those motions. I had that circled. I don't think you made motions.
Are we in the new business, number five? At the top of page two? That number five?
Mr. Cohen suggested having a, yeah, I just...
So it's not state approval for the boundary line adjustment?
Right.
For the wastewater permit?
Yeah, for wastewater permit. And then at the bottom, it said, Ms. Noisepolling moved two times. I don't think the chair made it move. I think other people did it.
Well, I was, I wasn't the acting chair.
She was the chair that night.
Right.
Dana was.
I'm sorry?
Dana was acting as the chair that night because she got there first.
And I did make those motions.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm wondering who Ivan J. is. Right above respectfully submitted.
You know, I know what that is. I don't know why it's there, but I know what it is. Yeah, I'll take that out.
Okay.
I'll give you a copy. We'll clean up and give you that copy.
Okay. And I'll hang on to it for a couple of weeks and, yeah. Okay. Any other suggestions on the minutes?
I move we accept them as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Okay. Anything else before we go downstairs? Anyone who suggests that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, the stamp.
And if anybody needs time sheets lately, I don't know if I turned any lately, but I do have some if anybody needs any.
Okay.
Time sheets if anybody needs any.
What is this stamp for?
So we've had a couple of researchers come in and ask why, like, the subdivisions just have a signature on it, and it says that's what they, how they approve it. And they said every of the town, there's like, there's a stamp that they fill out, like date and time and person and all this stuff because, they said, in 50 years, 100 years, somebody goes, look at this, nobody's going to know what that signature means, why that's there. So they have, but that's example at one point for that. So that was what we were talking about.
Just make one up like that.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think that you need to add anything to that.
That's fine.
No, motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes, right. We're adjourned.